Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, July 12th, and we're beginning at 6:01 PM. At this time, I'd like to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items to add to the agenda? Or any comments concerning the agenda's construction, I guess? Counselor Wiley?
I'm just ready with the motion.
Thank you. Let me just check Legislative Services. Are you ready for this as well? Okay, buckle up.
I move that council adopt the July 12th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda as amended, to reorder the agenda to have the 2024 Budget Introduction considered prior to the Capital Project and Major Initiatives Priority Matrix, and to delete 7.1 Video Surveillance Policy Advice from officials, and to delete 5.6 Recreation User Fee Comparison.
Thank you, Counselor Wiley. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you for that, Counselor Wiley. We have no delegations tonight, and I think on our website, you can always find information as to how to become a delegation, and I believe we have a couple of delegations possibly coming next week, so you can check our website for that. We move on to Item 4, 4.1, Confirmation of the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for May 10th, 2023. Counselor Wiley?
I move that we adopt the committee... Sorry. I move that the committee adopt the May 10th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented.
Thank you. I'll call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Claudette, sorry. Has Counselor Montgomery called in? No request to be on Zoom? Okay. Phew, I thought I had possibly forgotten about him. Okay, that brings us to Item 5, Business, 5.1, Winter Road Maintenance Update. Good evening, Donna. I'm sure your nerves have settled down by now.
Sort of. In honor of this, I've worn all white with speckled black pants that represent Pickle Mix.
And I see you have no nervous tics anymore.
Not yet, not yet. They're coming, though, I'm sure. Okay, so as you introduced, I'm here to do a winter sidewalk, road, and pathway update from the last season. So the 2022 and 2023 snow season saw some challenges. It started off early with the first major snowfall occurring on November 1st. From there, Strathmore had an icy, windy, and snowy winter with only a few very short chinooks. There were also some capacity issues at the snow dump that are currently being resolved. The town also experienced three freezing rain events. From November 1st until the end of March, Strathmore received 135 centimeters of snow. Of the 150 days in that timeframe, only 59 of those days were above zero. Only 46 of those days had overnight temperatures that were above minus 10. This minus 10 is important because that is the coldest temperature that Pickle Mix activates, which allows operations to peel any bonded snow and ice off of the roads. Any overnight temperatures below that threshold, it generally will take until the late afternoon for the daytime temperature to warm up to a temperature where the equipment is effective with peeling any of that bonded snow and ice. So we also experienced a tremendous amount of windy days. 145 of those 150 days experienced various degrees of wind events. These wind events required a response from operation staff as the wind creates black ice and causes drifting snow. As shown by the Pickle Mix statistics in the report, compared to the previous years where Strathmore had milder winters with less ice and less Pickle Mix was used. Pickle Mix is a good indication of the type of winter we had, which this year was a very icy winter. Pickle Mix has two primary uses. It has a salt content that aids in melting snow, plus an abrasive which provides traction. Do you guys see that on your... Okay, okay, good. Okay, so I won't go through the numbers because you have them right there. Sure, okay. So in the 2018 and 2019 season, we used 814 tons of Pickle Mix. In the 2019 and 2020 season, we used 956 tons. In 2020 and 2021, we used 357 tons of Pickle Mix. 2021 and 2022, we used 699. And then this past season, we used a whopping 1,516 tons of Pickle Mix. So the Parks Department also had an above-average year of ice melt applications with using over 250 bags of ice melt that were placed on town sidewalks and pathways. So this all being said, the operation staff were able to do three removal events from the priority routes, and multiple removal events in the downtown core. We also conducted multiple visits into the residential streets to do rep maintenance and sand at stop signs. And with our limited downtime, staff also conducted maintenance on our vehicles and equipment. We refilled the Pickle Mix tent multiple times and conducted other tasks around town. And this is all done with six operators in public works and three operators in parks. And we averaged 450 man-hours of snow maintenance in each month between public works and parks. So as I mentioned, we do review this on an annual basis, and we talked about the chart. There is a couple of recommend... Well, just only... Sorry. Only one recommendation that I'm presenting at this time, which is to include a section of Aspen, which... Can you see where I'm circling here? This area here. So it is... It's Aspen Creek Way, Aspen Creek Crescent, and the bottom end of Aspen Creek Circle from 106 to 163. And including this street and these streets into our road maintenance would add probably one extra day when we do a snow removal event, but can be easily melted into our regular operations when we're doing snow clearing.
Donna, are you okay with questions as they come up?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. We have Counselor Peterson and then Counselor Mitzner.
Okay.
I was just wondering, Donna, why you are including Aspen. I know some of it, but probably would just be helpful for everybody to know.
So the reason we're including that is, as you see in most of the neighborhoods, they have at least one street that's done that allows an exit in the event of an emergency, and also for fire trucks and emergency response to enter into the neighborhood. So that's why we included that loop in Aspen, because there's nothing in there that allows them access in there.
Can you pop your map up so we can see Hillview, please?
Yeah. Wrong way.
Okay, thank you.
Donna, maybe I can answer your question tied into Counselor Mitzner's. Is that Hillview Road that is in purple there?
So we've got Hillview Drive, section of Hillcrest Boulevard, and Hillview Road, yes.
Okay.
And the gates as well.
Okay, thank you. Have you received... Like, I know I heard complaints, obviously, and I'm sure you got way more than me. I had heard questions and comments about Hillview Road and the rest of Hillcrest Boulevard. Is that something that has been considered at all as far as adding?
We did consider, but because they have an exit out of there, that's why we didn't include it. Like, everybody's got that loop to get in and out of the neighborhood, which they also have access to get in there as well.
Okay. So, you know, I've read your report, and I really appreciate listening to you on it, too. Would you say that the majority of our complaints and problems were tied into that, just that it was a one-off kind of a crazy winter?
And that's why I'm not proposing many changes to the policy at this time. I think let's just see what happens this next season.
Yeah.
I mean, I can come to you guys at any time, really, if we find that it's not working well, and request changes to the policy. But at this time, I mean, looking at those stats, we've done fine up until this last year where we had that crazy icy winter. I hope that's not the normal, right?
Right.
So it could be, but if it does, and it is, then I think at that time, we address it at that time.
Okay, thank you. And maybe a question for both our CAO and you. I looked with Financial Reserves coming in the next section that we deal with. I read that we have that Snow Control Reserve at the end of 2022 of $110,296. So are we, in very low snowfall, are we still looking to carry over or to build up a reserve for winters like we just had?
Mayor, I think, like, in the proposed operating reserves that we'll talk about, it's abnormal snow events would actually be under the Financial Stabilization Reserve. And, you know, I'll let Leanna do more justice to it than I, but there would be a minimum balance is what she's proposing, so that there would be adequate funds in there in that abnormal winter we might see every eight to 10 years, so to speak. So what I'm saying is, if council adopts the reserve policy, chooses to maintain the minimum balance, there would be money there every year, instead of carrying it forward from year to year. But at the same time, if that's a practice council wanted to do to carry forward balances, you could do that as well.
Okay, no, that idea sounds good. I was just hearkening back to another council when we... A darker time, winter was coming, and we had created a situation where you could use snow reserves from years where you didn't have a lot of snow events. But that new idea is good for me as well. Thank you. Any other questions for Donna while she's not freezing out in a snowbank somewhere? Seeing none, then thank you for your report and your ability to answer questions. Counselor Peterson?
I don't have a question, Your Worship. I just, you know, one of the things that we really saw, as you did last winter, was this, just this blanket of concern from community. And I think that you have, just in a very succinct way, pointed out the reason why. And I know that you talked before, too, that utilizing, you know, 1,500-plus tons of Pickle Mix brings its own issues.
Yes.
And you've spoken to us about that before. And so I just think that in this time of reflection, it is understandable. And I'm grateful even to, you know, to the people who've brought all those concerns forward, because that level of concern, too, highlights the kind of challenges that you face. Even though, you know, it feels like you're being bombarded, it is an actualization of the very different context that you were living in. And I also want to thank the town's communication team that worked so closely with you and the senior leadership to keep people not happy, but to keep them well-informed.
Yes.
And doing the best you can, and just seeing you come forward with this plans that are designed to keep everybody safe and well, and to provide this fulsome explanation of what happened. It's good to know going forward. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I just want to also express my appreciation to you and your crew and the hard work you did to manage that winter. And I know we're covered by media. I would like you to just make a quick comment, because some of the more common complaints I had were on snow rows or wind rows. And I've tried to say it on my page, that when you plow the roads, they are so that vehicles can safely move through the streets of Strathmore. And that plowed snow has to go somewhere, so it is being left in front of driveways. Even in front of the mayor's driveway.
Yes.
There were wind rows last year, and it's just, it's the nature of the beast. So could you just take a minute maybe on that?
So that is one thing we actually did consider as we were reviewing the policy, was looking at maybe, is it possible to move snow into the center of the road as opposed to the side of the road, which I think Saskatoon does that, but that's not on the residential street. And that would introduce a whole different safety issue when you have big piles of snow in the middle of the road. So I know it's really inconvenient, and hopefully, like I said, we'll have a better winter, because what was happening when we went and tried to remove snow is because there was so much ice, it was just breaking our grader blades. And that's a whole different cost to maintenance of equipment as well, right? So let's just hope that we have a better winter, and that the wind rows aren't as excessive this year, and that we can get in and do some removals and that sort of thing a lot easier and quicker and more frequently. And if it does, if we have another winter like that, we'll maybe look at that and talk with the emergency response about, you know, maybe doing our operations a little bit differently, where we put the snow when we're doing those priority routes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Donna. Counselor Mitzner?
Can you also just refresh myself and the public, please? You indicated that there's additional snow fencing this year?
Yes.
Which will help? Thank you.
Yes, there is, yeah. We have a whole list of locations we want to do, one being just in particular that really sticks out for me, the 244 up along there, because we had a tremendous amount of drifting, to the point that the ditch was so full that if you drove into it, you'd probably lose your vehicle. Like, it was pretty astronomical back there. So I know there's a gas line back there, but we want to actually put some huge length of snow fence back there. And we have some other little pockets as well that we want to do. Yes.
Thank you very much, Donna. If there are no further questions, thank you again, and it was great seeing you.
You, too.
We move now to 5.2, Financial Reserve Policy Number 1817. Tom, you're speaking to this one. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Once we get the presentation up there, I'll start. So as I think the mayor kind of led into his question there to Donna about reserves for snow clearing, so we'll talk about that and the other reserves. So there was a reserve policy in place previously, if I can get this slide forward, from a couple years ago, but we've gone through and we've done a complete revamp of that policy. So I'll give a high-level summary of the policy. Hopefully, you had a chance to review it. So some of the key concepts in the reserve policy or in the financial reserve policy, and I think I'm kind of assuming at this point, council's familiar with the concept of reserves, and I won't go through that discussion of the use of reserves or the strategy behind them, but we'll talk more about that even as we go into the budget presentation in a few minutes. So some of the key concepts with the financial reserve is making sure that we do have stable taxation. So again, reserves can be used to make sure that we've got dollars set aside, so that way we don't get those ups and downs for taxation, utility rates, whatever it might be, because one year, we're going to have capital projects that maybe are $7 million, next year, maybe $3 million. So ensuring that we've got reserves for various projects or even operating costs that fluctuate year after year, and make sure that we're very stable. So ensuring that we don't have huge tax increases. Also, another key concept, pay-as-you-go philosophy. So making sure that we're paying for our operating costs and capital costs as we go along, and we're not relying strictly on debt, because debt isn't a source of funding, it's just an avenue to finance projects, but we still need to fund that through either revenue of taxation, utilities, whatever it might be, or grants. So again, making sure that we're paying as we go along for projects. Cash management, again, helps with our cash flow situation, to have reserves in our holdings. And another key thing is make sure that we're having those reserves at the right time, so that way we're able to repair, maintain, and replace assets. And we'll be getting into this hugely as part of our capital budget when we look at it in the fall. How can we make sure that we got reserves when the time is necessary for those utility repairs, road repairs, whatever it might be? The policy also talks about, in the chart in particular, associated with the policy, of the reserves that we've set up, we've streamlined them, but we've also identified what the purpose of those reserves for, and then also what the use is. So that way, there's clarity for council, the public, and for administration on the dollars that are these reserve funds. Where are they to be utilized? So there's clarity on that for now and for the future. We also identify in the reserve policy the source of funding. So are the funds going in these reserves coming from developers? Are they coming from tax dollars? Are they coming from utilities? Are they coming from one-time source of funding? Paybacks of various fees, such as the affordable housing through Bayside? So again, where's that funding? And clearly identifying where those funds should go and into what reserve. And then setting minimum and maximum reserve balances, so making sure that we're trying to achieve, how many dollars should we have in there? And we'll be working with council and particularly with Andre from Asset Management, helping to really determine some of these balances. What is the amount that we really need in there on an ongoing basis to maintain what we have? So again, we've put some minimum amounts in there and also maximum amounts. So we're not overtaxing, not collecting, or having reserves at too high a level, and really taking a long-term approach to this. So building this reserve policy, really driving or utilizing that for our capital budget process, and looking at that long term of 10 years or even longer in some cases, making sure, like, are we going to have the funds in place at the right time when we need them? And also, and this kind of ties in back to maybe the snow removal dollars is using a pooled approach. So we've gone from probably 30 reserves down to maybe, I'm going to say, 13 or 14. I didn't count how many there are. So instead of having, oh, we've got a reserve for snow clearing, we've got a reserve for stray cats, whatever it might be, we've got a reserve for this, is taking that pooled approach, similar to what we do for insurance or something. So instead of having $100,000 here, $100,000 there, $100,000 there, just taking that pooled approach, maybe we only need $200,000 as a contingency. So again, utilizing that pooled approach for reserves when the opportunity shows itself. And I'll just kind of go over some of the key reserves. So on the operating side, we have our Financial Stabilization Reserve, so that's kind of the snow clearing, emergency expenditures that come up, maybe we've got a loss of revenue, that stabilizes, so we don't see those big fluctuation taxes. A new one that we're looking at putting in place, and this will be talked about and presented as part of the operating budget process this year, is the non-recurring or non-annual recurring expenses. So that might be the election, where we have it not every year, but every third year. But again, that's a hit on the budget that third year. How can we stabilize that each year so it's not up and down? So we're going to be looking at that and reporting back to council at budget time on that. Development applications, again, making sure if we've got a big year where we've got a bunch of development applications in, building permits, we may be taking $300,000, but we might not have the inspection costs related to that until a year or two later. So making sure that we're managing the ebbs and flows of development fees, and that way we're not just utilizing the revenue one year, and then, oh, well, we don't have enough dollars set aside to pay for those costs down the road. So that's one that a lot of communities are going with now. And then on the capital reserves, basically two reserves for capital, one for asset replacement and rehabilitation, so vehicles, cemetery care, municipal buildings, all recreation facilities, and then office and technology equipment, and then the second one being for new capital. So dollars that you maybe want to set aside for the future for new projects that you want to do. So streamlining that. And then some specific grants, or not grants, but financial reserves for roads, sewer, or stormwater, wastewater, water, and solid waste, and fire, and sports center. And these are specific because maybe we have a source of funding. On our utility rates, we have an amount going into the utility reserves for the water, wastewater, stormwater, and solid waste. We have fees that are designated on your utility bills for those reserves, so we're keeping those. Sports center, we have funds that come in exclusively from Wheatland County and from Golden Hill School District that are earmarked for those. And affordable housing, Bayside Condominium Complex, if there's repayment of the second mortgage on some of those, we're sending that aside because that's specific for that. So there's a few that we have unique that we've set up for those uses. And then dedicated reserves. So these are the ones primarily coming through, that Ethan would talk about, is the ones that are from development that have to go into these reserves because they're legislated or through bylaw, and cash flow municipal reserve is through legislation. And from all the reserves that we have, like I said, there's probably 30 or so. This is what the... We're kind of summarizing the new reserves would be. So we're going from probably, say, 30 to probably about maybe 15 or so, streamlining it, having it very clear in that chart that's in the policy, what the use is for, how funds go in there, and that way we can be very strategic at budget time, where the... How do we utilize these funds?
Tom, are you okay with questions as we go through?
Yes, sorry.
Counselor Mitzner?
So for the Affordable Housing Reserve, in addition to Bayside, town of Strathmore, and I'm not clear on this, do they own the additional 12 units that are subsidized housing, or do they belong to the Strathmore Housing Authority? And if so, the funds that are generated, the rents generated there, and the expenditures for lawn maintenance, new kitchens, new roofs, et cetera? I'm just wondering how that falls into our budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Mitzner. Sorry.
I think I can respond to that. So the social housing component of the Wheatland Housing Management Body is owned by the province and funded by the province and managed by Wheatland Housing. So that would include the units that you referenced, and also the units that are in Carsland-Rockford Standard Inclusion?
Yeah, so the only funds that have gone into the affordable housing here is, I think, over the last number of years, we've had three second mortgages repaid on Bayside. So if we get any more, they would be, go in there and be earmarked for affordable housing projects. And this is the same chart I showed at council about a month ago, just where our current reserve balances are. So they dipped a little their back up, but I think the key thing is, maybe not what the balances are, but how many dollars are we putting into the reserve each year, so that way we have dollars in that we can spend through the capital budget or through the operating budget, depending on the reserve. So the reserve balance doesn't always mean a whole lot, it's more about how many dollars are we allocating each year for reserves is the crucial thing, and we'll have a chart on that coming up in this later presentation. So kind of just the highlights or summary, we've tried to make the policy where it's much easier to understand, utilize, for the public, for council. We've gone to a more pooled approach of pooling the funds, so we don't have all these separate funds that were 10 years later, what were those dollars set aside for? I've seen it numerous times. And really focused on the future, setting aside dollars and making sure that we're getting ready for, say, five, seven, eight years out. Oh, well, how are we going to pay for that new pumper truck or ladder truck, or some other facility? So really looking at that long-term, 10-year plan, so.
Tom, is there an amount that you would like to see the financial stabilization at? Like, is there... Like, I know you said you don't want to have... You don't want to get in a situation where your reserves are really high, but is there a level that we should be at?
Yeah, in that chart for the Financial Stabilization Reserve, it talks about some percentages. I don't have it directly in front of me, but I think that's actually one of the ones that we're actually really probably good on. Right now, we have $2 million in there, I believe. Based on, say, best practices, we should probably be in around that, I think, on the lower end, around $2 million, the upper end, $3 million. But we shouldn't also be using that reserve. I mean, we've been pretty open on what we use that reserve for, and it should be more for a lot of emergency things, where, say, if we're buying a piece of equipment or water license, whatever, those should be maybe coming from the more site-specific reserves, say, water reserve and other things. So I think the Financial Stabilization Reserve is actually at a good balance right now to handle that. We'll talk more about that at budget time. A lot of the other reserves are significantly below where they should be, but we'll strategize with council on how we can get there and enhance the levels. with council on how we can get there and enhance the levels that they're currently at.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Langmaiden and then Counselor Wiley.
Thank you, worship. I do have a question on the minimum and max, and pardon me, minimum and target or optimum levels. I see here that the rationale used to establish levels is that the best practice is a minimum of one month and an optimum of two months of annual operating expenditures. But the recommendations that we've been given of 5% and 10% are actually below that. So one month would be about 8% and two months would be about 16 and a half roughly. But we've recommended 5 and 10. Is there a reason why we're kind of on, below the low end of what the optimal level you describe in the rationale is?
Yeah, I'll take a look at that again in case, because again, I was tweaking things and maybe should have been updated.
Okay.
So I'll take a look at that. Thanks. And I really appreciate you looking at those because, yeah, what does that mean and does it tie in? I also had to recognize that at this current time that to get some of these reserves to the level that they need to be, it's probably going to take us many years. So again, I didn't maybe want to set some of these levels too high. Maybe the, the best practice is this level, but maybe we need to maybe set our targets a little bit lower. And then over time, and like the policy says, we're going to be reviewing those annually. And then we can reflect and say, can we get to maybe what that best practice is as opposed to maybe what our minimum and target level is right now?
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Kind of rolls into my next question about minimum and target levels, and that's that I, I've read through it very closely. And my one concern is that 10 years is a long time to consider as a funding timeline. Grants change, you know, revenue sources change, lots of things change in 10 years, which is understandable and to be expected. I wonder how that, how have you considered that, those potential, well, almost guaranteed fluctuations and how that will come? And how that will affect our target and optimum levels? And how that actually impacts what we're saving every year? Because if we don't really know where the money's coming from, we don't really know how much we need to put in.
I would maybe say, let's save that question. And we've got a slide on the presentation that Leanna and I will be doing that will be talking about where our grants were, where they are now and where they're going, and along with other funding, and how can we get those reserves up, understanding that every change in government changes grant levels.
Exactly.
And, and using the best information that we have at that time. And that's, I think, with some of the charts that we have later on. We'll get into that and we can have a more thorough discussion that particularly during the budget of, because we'll have more information in another three, four months of maybe what some of those targets are, where should we be? And what funding sources, hopefully maybe we'll have some clarity in the next few months of the new replacement grant for the MSI grant, which is still unknown how many dollars. They still haven't come up with the formula for that new grant. So we don't know how many dollars we are. So we're in a little bit of limbo here. So hopefully by, say, the middle of the fall or late fall, we'll have some clarity on that. And we can start doing that modeling, but we, we can only use the best information that we currently have.
Thank you. I'll wait and then just kind of, I'll ask you one more and then I'll stand down to let the next person take a chance, take a turn. The kind of third question I have regarding the minimum and target levels and how we determine how, how much we are contributing to reserves each year is, was the idea of a target percentage of, say, our annual operating and capital budget, saying, I'm going to throw a number out there, say, 5%. Every year we dedicate 5% to our reserves so that instead of necessarily looking at a target that might, might be fluctuating on us quite wildly based on grants, that we're, you know, targeting a certain amount to put away each year. So, you know, reading through some of these, some of these are based on surpluses or one-time transfers and things like that. And I don't really see something that says like, we are going to save this much money a year for reserves. You know, something that's maybe, maybe a little more tangible and concrete? I'm just wondering if that was considered.
Yeah, and see, first, some of the reserves were, yeah, we don't know what one-time funding or amount, like it's, a perfect example is with the fire services being up for the wildfires in the north, we're getting a pretty good cash influx from sending our teams up there to fight the fires. We're going to have a cash influx. That's kind of a one-time thing. We'll, we'll be putting a couple hundred thousand into the fire reserve from that. So we, those aren't always known, but we also know that we need more dollars in the fire reserve than the 14,000 that we have in there now. So with some of the reserves, it is going to not be clear all the time. But as we work through, or probably over the next six months to 12 months, working with Andre from Asset Management, really try to determine, particularly for our big ones, utilities, like our water, sewer, storm water, is, how many dollars do we need? And it's going to be based on asset value. And what's going to be the replacement and the age of those assets and really determining over the next, say, 10-year period, how many of these old water lines that need to be replaced and stuff like that? And it's not always easy to just come up with a, a number. The range is kind of here, but we'll work with getting more, say, detailed information. So hopefully you have a comfort level of what that maybe amount should be.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'll take a break and let someone else have a turn.
Thank you, Counselor Langmaiden. Counselor Wiley, then Counselor Peterson.
I don't have too much. I love this policy. I love, I think the target is specific enough for me, just the best practices. Up till now, I kind of felt like we were shooting at gophers in the dark. But it's going to help future councils and this council to avoid overspending and underbudgeting. My only question is, will we see this policy affecting our taxes in the short term? So when we sit down to do next year's budget, will there be an increase in taxes in order to build up these reserves? Is there a one-year plan, three-year plan, five-year plan kind of thing?
Yeah, and that's, that's a big picture thing, and we'll be talking a little bit about that later in the upcoming presentation, a little bit about those strategies. And we'll be having a thorough discussion with council during the budget process because when you look at some of these amounts that we're putting in the reserves, they are below where they, the target levels, well below the target level. So how do we, how do we make sure that we're not all of a sudden hitting taxpayers with huge increases so we're actually funding where we should be? So there's going to have to be some give and go where, okay, how do we maybe gradually increase reserve transfers? And then where can we find opportunities for other areas that we can put in the reserves? And, and we'll talk a little bit about that later, but it's going to be, yeah, there's going to be some challenges for council.
Yeah, if I could just build on Tom's comments there. So, you know, municipalities, actually all levels of government in Canada have been underfunding their, their asset replacement for, for many, many years, right? So that's why we're working on the asset management. That will give us a much more accurate picture of what we need to be putting away in the longer term for reserves. In the meantime, I think Leanna will talk about it, you know, you may want to consider a placeholder each year. Some, a number of communities have done that. Cochrane, St. Albert are a couple that come to mind where, while they're establishing what those ultimate costs are in their asset management programs, they're putting a nominal sum away each year to start building it so that when you do determine that, you're not trying to whole, put a whole bunch in back-end loaded and increasing taxes even more in those subsequent years.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Counselor Wiley, for the question. We go now to Counselor Peterson.
So, so just following up exactly on what, what CEO Scobal has said, my concern has always been in that rehab replacement reserve, you know, just knowing, having lived here a long time and knowing what's underground and knowing what we face and the potential for catastrophic failure is very real. And, and there's a really good reason for it. It isn't, it isn't because, you know, 30 years of past councils have not done due diligence. It is because this community boomed and they had to put their attention to supporting immediate concerns in that time, and they did the best they could. And they, they did some, some things like bringing water from Calgary, which was critical to the survival and thriving of this community. But for me, that's a big concern. And in, in four successive audits, it's been identified as a major concern for this community, although that, you know, they haven't criticized us, they've certainly been cognizant of it. And, and I think as, as Counselor Langmae pointed out, there's a bit of a shortfall on the, on the capital reserve side from, from what they said to just maybe more than the designated percentage. And, and I hear what Counselor Langmae says about the 10 years being a long time to forecast, but I think 10 years is a lot more when it's one 30-year lifetime versus when you're looking at it from my side, it doesn't seem very long at all. And so I think that's a consideration. And so the other thing that I, that I am, from a, from a council perspective, I am just so passionate about the need to build reserves without consideration of, of grant funding and, and to not plan through or around the context of that because it's so unreliable. And so, you know, it's great if it's there, but it's just incredibly fraught to depend on it. And so, so for, from a, from a visioning perspective, for me, that is a, a major consideration. The other question I had, and, and it very well may be placed under the financial stabilization reserve through the one-time expenditure. But when you're, when you're, when you've lived a while, one of the things that you start, you know, you start to see patterns. And if there is a pattern that I see emerging in, in our, in our day-to-day life, year-over-year life, it is the increased levels of unpredictability in all manner of life, in terms of, of weather events, in terms of pandemic, in terms of, of socioeconomic calamity. And at some point in time, you know, when you're dealing with it, and we have, I mean, in small things like heating and cooling stations, you know, that the town has engaged in, those cost money. And although they're small amounts, they lend themselves to thinking about patterns and, and what else is happening. The pandemic maybe was a one-off, but probably isn't. Everything that we hear from the World Health Organization tells us that, that pandemics are going to be consistent in, in our lives, and certainly weather events are as well. So my question is, is there a tracking mechanism that we could build into this policy that would lend itself to, to mindfulness around building reserve on that socioeconomic prospect? Because I think, and I believe that, that it's judicious to think about it in terms of not just a one-time thing, that putting it under the financial stability reserve under the, under the one-time expenditure is probably not judicious in, in terms of going forward. Because if it's happening all the time, it's not a one-time. So I know that's not a very cheerful thought, but I think it's a realistic one. So I guess I'm asking for some kind of tracking mechanism, and, and it doesn't have to happen today or even next year, maybe even in five years. But it would be really good to track this and to start to look for patterns. And maybe there needs to be an additional reserve.
Yeah, and that's where, like if there was, say, with the COVID-19 pandemic, going back and looking at, yeah, what expenditures did we incur over and above? I know there was different government grants that helped out municipalities with those extra costs, but going back and knowing what those costs are, because will there be grants available for that if it's a regular process? Again, you don't know the timing of that would be, what level of dollars would you need for that? But I think tracking is, is definitely something that can be done.
Well, and, and there's also, there's also a space for that in, in this province, you know, in Alberta Disaster Services. And, you know, having, having spent a lot of my life with people who work in Alberta Disaster Services, we call them the Chicken Littles, the sky is always falling. And so they have a lot of excellent planning around prospectus that, that, you know, that we wish would never happen. And, you know, and it's not, you know, always fulfilled, but they have been extraordinarily accurate. And I'm talking in terms of predicting everything from SARS to H1N1 to the COVID pandemic to fires and floods. They've been extremely successful in their predicting models. And I don't know how that relates to a small municipality, but there is probably context to consider going forward, I would think. Thank you, worship.
Thank you.
So yeah, tracking mechanism, that's my deal.
Thank you. Counselor Langmaiden?
Thank you very much. I only have a couple more questions, I promise. And they're, and they're, they're easy, well, maybe not easy, but they're not hard. One question I have is around solid waste and recycling and setting up a reserve for that. And what impact do we think that the extended producer responsibility is going to have on our need for that reserve going forward? And is that a reserve that might eventually one day be rolled into something else just to be, because it becomes smaller?
Yeah, that one is probably somewhat limited. The reason that one's in there is because it's so different, say, from water or wastewater or storm water, where those are critical ones, the solid waste and, say, recycling. The reason that one is, is in there is because we do have on our utilities, schedule for our utility bills, a certain amount allocated for solid waste. We don't have a whole lot other than, say, replacement of, of some equipment and the likes. So it's not a big reserve. So I think that's one that I think is part of an upcoming utility rate review. We take a look at and really determine the need for that reserve, or should it be just part of our common reserve?
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I was, I was thinking about it. I was thinking, well, most of this is done by contract collection. I think our only, our only cost is really the cost of the bins at this point that I can think of.
But isn't it because we want black carts? Like that's one of the reasons for the reserve.
We have a fee that's on our utility bills for solid waste collection. I don't know the background of why that was put in place, but we have a dollar amount we put in that reserve. We need to have some further discussion on why that was set up and is there a need for it in the future?
Worth a discussion in the future, not to have that discussion today.
No.
And then just my, my final kind of, I suppose this is more of a comment, but I'll form it as a question. I noticed that there's no, no minimum or maximum, sorry, I keep saying maximum, or target or optimum number set for affordable housing. And to me, that, that's an issue that's near and dear to my heart and, and something that I know is drastically needed here in Strathmore is more affordable housing. Now, I, I'm not under any, any illusion that, that we're going to all of a sudden start buying, buying up all the real estate in town or anything like that. But I'm wondering if, what was the thought process of not setting a number or a target around that?
Really put no thought process in that.
Okay.
Primarily because I think that's a bigger discussion that SLT and council would have on affordable housing and initiatives. I mean, you've got the initiative regarding the Wheatland, New Wheatland Lodge and that, and how does that, how would that impact? The reason we established it right for now is just because of the Bayside second mortgages, any repayments of those. We wanted to make sure that those dollars were there available. It would take a long time, or it wouldn't take a long time, but we'd still have to have that bigger discussion of, of really looking at our current needs of what those targets should be. So that was beyond, I think, the scope of what we're putting before council this time. So was just a lack of capacity to do that.
We don't, we don't have a firm kind of strategic plan around how, how we're addressing that yet. So coming up with a target would be difficult, I understand. Okay. It would be nice to have a little bit more money there. It would be nice to have a little bit more money there where we might be able to one day one day look at maybe acquiring land for the purposes of affordable housing or things like that, things you can't do with 150 grand. But that was just a question, and those are all I have. Thank you very much for for being so wonderful with your answers.
Yeah, we just didn't want to lose that fund and those payments somewhere else. That was just to protect the the nature and the intent of what those were for.
That makes sense to me, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Langmeade. Any more questions for Tom? Seeing none, thank you very much for your time. And we move now to item 5.3, Budget and Taxation Guiding Principles Policy, number 1818. Leanna, good evening.
Good evening. I don't have a PowerPoint for you guys tonight. I thought that this policy was large enough to kind of have more of a conversation piece. No, I don't need that one. No, I don't have one. Okay. So in 2021, council approved the 1809 budget policy and then additionally, the 2022 Town of Strathmore Long-Term Financial Plan. What this policy does, it gives, we found that those two policies were a little light on content. So we thought we'd come back to you and give you stronger guidance and a target for building stronger reserve funds with long-term vision for the community. So this was quite timely, presenting our reserve policy to you guys earlier tonight. So the Budget and Taxation Guiding Principles Policy, we have significant implications on policies, bylaws and budgets. Future taxation policies, debt management policies, budget policies and financial plans will work in collaboration with the Financial Reserve Policy. Annual operating and capital budgets will be heavily impacted by this policy. Future property tax rate bylaws and borrowing bylaws will also be influenced and guided by this policy. The Budget and Taxation Guiding Principles Policy will not place any additional work to staff because this is what you guys hired us to do, is to bring clear, transparent reports to you and give the best advice that we can to you. Some of the key concepts that are within this policy is the authority and the responsibility to implement. It gives clear direction on who is responsible and who is not responsible. It tells you what administration can do and what we cannot do, and tells you what you are responsible for. The next one is it sets service standards and expectations. It sets the standards on how the budget is to be developed in a consistent and planned manner and to take into consideration the impacts of future years and the town's ability to fund those impacts. One of the big discussion points that we've heard tonight is, what is a reasonable amount for affordable housing? Well, we have lots of work to do here. We need to look at this in great detail. You talk about our utility reserves. What's the targeted amount? Well, we need to do a rate review, and that is in the works. Maybe not in 2023, but maybe in the next 18 to 24 months, we'll be looking at starting that. The Budget Guiding Principles sets the actions of council and administration will be conducted in a manner that aligns with the context of the policy. And it ensures that the budget is important to, it shows how the budget is such an important document to council as a strategic document. As it says, only elected officials will be permitted to deliberate and adopt budgets. Administration cannot adopt, this is your responsibility. One of our other key concepts is the programs and services. Council endorses programs, service levels on behalf of the community. The town's programs, services and service levels will be defined in a document through our level of services initiatives. Currently, we are starting that in 2023, and we'll be working on that for the next 18 to 24 months, hoping to have this back in front of you. Another part of this policy is the short and long-term planning. The town will align best practice to ensure that short-term and long-term plans are being executed. Strategic planning is critical to moving the organization forward and works to express council's desire for future direction. If council decides that they want to build three new rec centers, how are we going to do that? Right now, we don't have the ability to make that kind of recommendation to you because we haven't done the research on that. So a rec center is an example of one thing, but it could be affordable housing, it could be a fire truck, it could be whatever we have come up between our asset management work that we're working on and other desires of council. This policy also talks about the tax revenue. And taxes are to be levied to fund the costs to deliver tax-supported programs of the community. It is not meant to be supporting user, or we need, we shouldn't be supporting utilities 100% through tax dollars. We have another source of funding for our utilities. So we'll get into that as in the intro to budget on our next presentation. As Tom had mentioned in the last presentation, he talked about the one-time revenue surpluses and other forms of volatile revenue. Within this policy, it says that we will not be budgeting for these extraordinary items. We don't want to overtax our residents. And when we do come into a windfall or where we have to fund an extraordinary event, we have the resources to do it. We have our user fees, license, permits and fines. As these are established by council, through user fees, license, permits and fines, those are to be used to offset the costs of those programs. Then we have our utility stabilization reserves. So these are our water, sanitary, sewer, storm and waste monit, waste management that we are hoping to get to a full cost recovery. We're not there yet, but we're going to work towards that with, of course, direction from council. We then also ensure that we have citizen engagement, transparency and accountability with the community. Council is committed to ensuring a high level of transparency and accountability to the citizens of Strathmore. This is why we had done citizen satisfaction surveys. What we heard from council last time you did one, we didn't want to do them on an annual basis. We want to look at those more on a biannual basis. Within this policy, we have a capital funding formula. So the capital funding strategy is based on the capital funding formula, which is reserves, grants. And sometimes there's specialized grants that we say water for life. Maybe we'll go after some of those grants. We also have a policy statement on our franchise fee revenue. And we say, any franchise fee revenue approved by bylaw shall solely be used as general revenue to offset residential and non-residential property tax rates. Our expenditures, our operating expenditure projections shall be based on actual historical trends, supplemented with the additional knowledge of any future expectations of council. It also states in here, our capital budget will be based on a 10-year capital budget. And I know that seems a great period for some people and maybe not long enough for others. So we will be looking at strategic inputs for the upcoming budget year, a framework for a four-year plan, but we'll have a full 10 years forecasted. It also gives guidelines for any amendments that are to happening between our operating and capital budget. It then tells, also within this policy, it includes the municipal taxation guiding principles, which is the municipal property tax split and having the revenue neutrality principles within, so we're not charging 90% to residents and 10% to non, non-residential rates. We're going to work with the Alberta average out of the 107 towns within the province of Alberta. So if anybody has any questions on this policy, please feel free.
Councillor Wiley and then councillor Langmeade?
No questions, just gratitude. I just wish that the citizens of Strathmore and the residents could understand just how great this is. Tonight's agenda is just home run after home run. So thank you for all the hard work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wiley. Councillor Langmeade?
Thank you very much. I have, just, sorry, I have a, I'm flipping through my pages here. Just a a note in line 6.1, I think you've left a comment in there.
6.1?
Just at the end, it says, identified on the corporate strategic plan that the inventory needs to be captured. I'm not sure that was meant to make it into the policy. Doesn't generally sound policy-y, but that's minor.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that for me?
So 6.6, the line 6.1, at the very end, it says, identified on the corporate strategic plan that the inventory of all our programs and services needs to be captured. Administration will be starting the service level review in late 2023. It just didn't sound like it may be fit in that section, I wasn't sure.
I believe the service level review will identify which programs that the Town of Strathmore offers and to ensure that we're using or offering the proper services for our residents.
Okay, yeah, it just, all right.
Would you like this word smashed a little bit?
Oh, just, it sounded like you were making a note to yourself about what we're doing. It sounds like we're making a note to ourselves about what we're doing next. It's not the end of, end of the world for me. Sorry, I didn't get a chance to kind of summarize my thoughts as 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 much as I wanted. Section, line 18.5 starts by saying, this approval shall, but it doesn't actually identify what approval it's talking about. Is it talking about the approval from council?
I'm just getting there, sorry. That's approval, something else.
I've popped down to 18.5.
I'll actually have to get back to you on this one, do a little bit more research.
That's okay. And then in 18.8 here, at the at the end, it's, you know what, actually, I just read it, ignore that. Sorry, I'll skip down to 20.1 now, section A. And it starts by saying that the CAO, in conjunction with the Director of Strategic Administrative and Financial Services or Delegate, may authorize amendments up to $200,000, provided the amendment is with the total approved budget. What, I'm wondering, when it says in conjunction, in conjunction with the director, what kind of, why the two, why? It's the only place in the document where two people from administration are required to approve something.
It's a dollar value.
It's the dollar value? Okay, and then I guess, another question I was wondering is, just having someone subordinate support? I I just, how does how does that work in terms of, I guess, I'm thinking if I was the Director of Strategic Administrative and Financial Services and Kevin came to me and said, we're making a change, I'd go, yes, boss. So I'm wondering how that kind of works internally, you know, it's the dollar amount, but is it really providing the oversight that we're looking for?
Kara?
I can just speak from experience that I've never ran into that situation, especially given my time here. Normally, how that works is that Kevin will say to to our team, can you confirm that it can be contained within the budget? Right? So before he signs off, he's asking us to validate that information as well.
Okay. I think there's some additional insight into this that came from previous directives of council in the last iteration of council that relates to this number and relates to the wording possibly around it. I might be wrong, maybe this is something that you've brought forward independently, but it speaks very clearly to actions of of the previous council in terms of of the of the capacity of the CEO to act independently.
One of the things within this, if there's any change in scope, changing funding source, it has to come back to you. So the likelihood of the project not having a change in scope is fairly unlikely. So if you guys would wish, we can change a dollar value, we can remove the dollar value.
Sorry, I just want to clarify, my concern was not around the dollar value. I was just wondering how that specific setup really, I I understand it's there for oversight and to and to ensure because of the high number that there's more than one set of eyes on it. I just wasn't sure how. Yeah, I just was wondering how that oversight might work. But if there's not a concern, then there's not a concern. Jumping down to number C here, we're kind of going into that idea that if there's any change, then it would have to come back to council. How are we defining something like a significant change in service level?
A change in service level could be change in hours. It could be change in amount of pickups per year, could be the change in the amount of mowing. So maybe we're going to a change in standard of mowing of our grass. It could be a change in our snow clearing. Maybe we don't want to use this pickle mix and, I'm not an operations person.
I understand, I guess what I'm saying is, there's always a scale of change in service level. For example, our, I'm not sure how often we mow places, I will say once a week, I don't know if that's true. But say we, we say we're going to mow a park once every week, but it rains one day and we're going to add, you know, so it's going to be a week and one day, that's technically a change in service level, but not something that I think council would be interested in. So I'm wondering where that significant comes in and how that's measured. What what is, is it like a a duration of time? It's just something that I catch on to whenever I see something saying, oh, a significant, well, who's determining what's significant? And what is significant?
Significant could be done through administration, it could be done through council. If you have a number of complaints on our grass is too long, our roads are not cleared fast enough, and you want to make a change.
One of the ones that we we have actual experience with is the, we reduced the number of heavy item garbage pickups. And then there was talk at what point about increasing it. And then increasing it would be pretty significant charge to to add another heavy item garbage pickup. So that that could be what a significant one could be in in real life situation for us.
Absolutely, and those examples all make sense to me. My question is more around just identifying what is significant to me. It just raises a red flag, it brings around the question of who's determining what significant is. Because something could be very significant to me or a resident, but not significant to somebody else. So it's just something, I'm not expecting us to solve this today. It's something that I see come up kind of recurring where we just say significant.
I can remove the word.
Pardon me?
I can remove the word significant.
I I don't think I'm going to ask for that today, just because I I don't want to do it as a one-off. It's just kind of something I'm bringing up as, I see a lot of it, I see it often as a significant change, something like this. And I don't always understand, well, who determines what's significant? And and what does that actually mean? For section H, 20.1H, emergency purchases should only be made. Is there some sort of notification or ratification process for emergency purchases afterwards?
You said 21 point?
So 20.1, so the same section we were in, but we're on H, but I'm down at H now?
Yes.
For emergency purchases, is there some sort of notification or ratification process from council? Should there be an emergency, you know, I I want you to be able to make emergency purchases? Just want to know about it after?
This would normally come through our CAO and through our DEM and a local state of emergency, a provincial state of emergency. But this gives us the allowance to be able to purchase without coming back for a budget amendment.
So it would only be under a state of emergency then? Not a piece of equipment has broken and we need it now because it's an emergency?
Correct. Cao Scoble?
Yes.
Well, I I mean, at the risk of sounding facetious, there would be no emergency equipment purchase because lead time is typically a year to two years.
Well, it doesn't necessarily need to be equipment, it just says emergency purchases.
We've actually taken that out because normally any emergency thing that comes up, we can manage within some small contingencies, we do keep for situations like that in the approved budget. If it gets beyond that, then you at minimum are probably into a special council meeting, but more likely a, a state of local emergency which has an entirely different set of expenditure parameters, um, because you are expending money to deal with the situation, but then you're seeking to recoup it later through the disaster recovery program through the province of Alberta, whi- which is one of the main reasons you declare a sole that, you know, indicating that we're getting into that type of event.
Absolutely, thank you. I was, I was more just thinking, I, I understand in terms of an emergency that's been declared, either local or, or whatnot, but I, I, emergencies are also subjective.
Yeah, well, so, so I mean, you know, if we, we had a bit of an issue with the snow dump that we've talked about, right, with all the, the excessive snow in there and the rapid melt, and, and we mobilized equipment and, and, um, and a consultant, and, and that could all be done within, like I said, we do keep some small contingencies in the budget to deal with something like that.
Okay, thank you. I think those are the majority of, of my comments, other than, uh, we just need to throw this through a spell checker and some formatting. Pardon me? Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Langmaid. Counselor Peterson?
So when I was going through this and the, um, in the hours that it, that it took me to go through so, so many, it impacts on so much of the work of council and is so incredibly dependent on the relationship between the council and the CAO and the council and the senior leadership team. And so I have scores of questions that I, that, that is useless for me to go through tonight, I think. And I, and I don't know when this council will have another opportunity, because tonight, I sort of see this as bringing all of those contexts into a focus for council to work through at a future date, and if I'm wrong, somebody will tell me, I'm sure. But as I was making notes, uh, going through this in the last few days prior to this, thinking about, as a, as a municipality, as a councillor in a municipality, what factors we need to consider in terms of the legal and regulatory compliance, i.e. the CAO bylaw that's coming up in front of us, and how, how this council ensures that the powers and responsibilities align, uh, align with relevant laws. And, you know, when, when councillors come forward or municipal councillors come forward to make these, and CAOs and senior leadership teams come bring these forward, you know, it should be always with the understanding that the same people aren't always going to be behind the same desks. So there is an outside understanding of that regulatory compliance that comes through and what that looks like. Because if I were to look at this today on the surface and I know that Kevin Scoble and his team are the people that are running this, I'd just walk away because I'm like, "It's good." But if I think about it in the context of, of that longer term, it looks different. And so, you know, understanding the limits and the scope, you know, becomes really critical. And, and in terms of the accountability and the oversight and the established mechanisms for accountability and oversight that, that, that this council has already put in in terms of bylaws and policies, don't always mesh with what I see here. And I'm not saying that this is not better, I believe that it is much better, but it's, it's out alignment issue and, and that, you know, at what time do we look at the, um, at the existing laws, bylaws and policies and, and, you know, how, how do we run that so that we have a clear understanding of, of what doesn't align and what does align? And, um, and I, and I, I don't know that in terms of this, you know, it's, it's the job of a council to always evaluate the CAO, our only employee, and, and what we have here, you know, I'm, and I haven't had enough time to really absorb it completely, but, but do the, um, is what we see here aligned with the performance expectations and the evaluations, um, that are done? And, and have we, have we got capacity to do the reporting and implementation mechanisms to ensure transparency and effective government, which is our role, as opposed to the, to the role of operations? And then in terms of the decision-making authority, I think that Counselor Langmaid spoke a lot to that in there, a lot of the things that she said are relevant to, um, to the things that, that I was questioning. And, um, I think a lot more will become clear when we look at the CAO bylaw, because that is where we determine which decisions require approval from, uh, elected officials, as you said, and, and which, uh, other governing bodies and which decisions are made by the CAO independently. And that whole idea around delegation of authority that ensures that responsibilities are appropriately distributed, um, that is something that, clear chain of command, which I know exists here, but I'm not sure, and, and you know, there's just, there's a high, high level of trust between this council and this administration, but I don't know if that's been dilinated, you know, I don't know for, for myself.
Counselor Peterson, would you be able to give some examples of where, you, you've got my attention, would you be able to give some examples of places where you, you are concerned, maybe?
No, no, I, no, you know, the only thing I'm concerned about, Counselor, that's a really good question, because if it sounds like I'm, I'm griping, I'm not. I'm, I'm thinking about our role as municipal councillors under the Municipal Government Act in terms of governance and the things that we have to consider, and how does this look? And ha- and have we covered all of these off from, you know, so our senior leadership team has done their job in doing this, so have we done ours? And, and is it, is it okay that they tell us how to do ours? Not necessarily, we have to have that oversight ourselves. So I don't see that they're doing anything wrong, I want to make that abundantly clear. I think that they've done things tremendously right, but we still need to have that parameter around it. And, and I think for, for our sake, we need to understand that, we need to understand what the governance provisions are, you know, as, I think is exactly what, what Director said when she came forward, "You need to understand your role, we need to understand ours, and we need to have it outlined." I'm not sure that we have that here, I think that we'll have it going forward as we go forward, but, um, we need to make sure that that accountability and oversight that is ours is clearly understood by us and that it lines up with everything that we see here from a governance perspective. And, and I think that, um, some of that has come through the strategic plan, but it's not in the fullness perhaps of what it needs to be, because what's in front of us today is just an incredibly, incredibly important document. It will guide the future of this town for the next 30 years, if, if this, if this comes, you know, to fruition. And we better know that, that we have, that we have got it together. And so, you know, the, one thing that CAO Scoble has done at, at the onset of his, um, of his work here was, he, he was articulate in defining his strategic leadership in ter- and, and that's how that strat plan unfolded. And so I think that, you know, his role in providing that strategic leadership and, and direction and guidance to the organization included setting the organizational goals and developing the practices for his senior leadership team. It was very difficult from that perspective to dictate to us without getting into some dicey, you know, what it does, what, what my concern always is, and, and nobody understands this better than the senior leadership team, is ensuring that you keep that balance between your governance and your operations. It has to be there. If it's not there, you know, if, if, um, if suddenly operations takes over all the agendas and all the plannings of all the meetings and they decide what goes on to those agendas and they decide what comes before this council, you know, you wind up with a mushroom syndrome, you know, where you are in the dark and you are being fed whatever they give you. And so I'm not saying that, you know, it's not, I want to be very clear, it's not a criticism, it's just simply a responsibility that this council has to make sure that we have met, um, our decision-making authority, our, you know, the accountability and oversight that we have, and, and the, and we know that our, that our leadership team, their strategic leadership is really well-defined, ours is less well-defined. And, and I think that that's always the case. In terms of the financial management, uh, budgeting and expenditure, that, that one's actually much easier because it's, there, there's oversight from auditors. So, you know, that, that to me is, is, uh, you know, the, the money in some ways is, is almost the least, except when it comes to how you prioritize that within a, within a governance and organizational structure. And, um, yeah, and then our role in how we communicate that to our stakeholders is something that's, um, not necessarily in here, but has to somehow align somewhere along the way.
Well, you, you, or sorry, may I?
I'm good.
You certainly got my attention, because I read this, it's sort of in the scenario you gave the first time, where I sat down and read it as the councillor I am today, working with the CAO I am today with the senior, and, and no red flags came up. But, but maybe we then need to revisit this so you could think of some examples of where this might potentially or could potentially create that mushroom syndrome that you talked about?
No one knows this better than a CAO who's worked in a municipality, you know, which makes us a very, very small frog in a smaller pond. He understands this clearly. And so I, I'm assuming, as I went through this massive amount of information in the last few days, I'm assuming that, that the same senior leadership team has a plan, a going-forward plan for how this will align and how this will happen. I'm, I'm not sure that I know what it is, but I'm sure that they know what it is.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Um, my question is on 21.1A, and it's along, along the similar vein as, as what Counselor Peterson was mentioning, and it's mainly maybe just wording that I'm a little confused by. 21.1A says the annual adjustment recommended to the municipal property tax split will be, will be determined by the chief administrative officer based on an evaluation of the following criteria. So that one sounds very, um, forceful and determined as far as the CAO will decide that, but then the wording is softened in B where it says the chief administrative officer will recommend to council an annual adjustment to the tax split. So I'm wondering if, rather than have it worded so strongly in A, we could soften it a bit to match up with the wording of B, and I hope I'm making sense.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm talking about, it's a bigger picture.
Yeah, it's kind of like a, a site, a, a specific thing, but it's just the wording to make it, to make it more so that, yes, the CAO, whoever it is in whatever time period, they wouldn't necessarily, the wording doesn't say that they're gonna determine it, that it's, it's going to be brought forward to council, so if we could adjust that wording possibly in the first part of A?
We can do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Leanna on this aspect?
Just again, to iterate, Your Worship, that, that, you know, if, if, if this were to come forward to, for approval today, I wouldn't approve it. So, so I don't know what the plan is going forward, like, I just, I just don't know when I would ask the senior leadership team, "What else?" Or "What more?"
Can I ask what you need more?
So I think what I'm looking for, I, I see a really strong organizational process. I do not see a governance process here. And if we don't have that, we don't have the required balance. So I don't know, like I said, I've, I've sat with this for a few days, I'm sure that you guys have sat with it for months, maybe that's the difference.
Correct.
Yeah, but I, I have, I have a level of uncertainty that I'm not comfortable with, because I don't think there's alignment, and it's not on your side, it's on our side, on the governance side. And so there's some alignment with our strategic plan, but not full alignment. And so the example that the mayor just gave is a prime example of that, but I'm not sure it's the only one, and I'm not, I'm not even certain about why I'm, well, I, I see the gaps in, in, in terms of the governance role here, I see lots of gaps. And, and I don't know, that's really not your job, so I'm not sure how that rolls out.
I would require you to take that to, um, I almost called you Counselor Scoble, um, to CAO Scoble.
Yeah, I understand.
And then he could direct administration to look into some of those. But we do want to ensure that you guys are comfortable within a policy that we are bringing forward.
Well, you know, as I said, this is a, these, these documents that are before us tonight, the, the CAO, um, bylaw, the capital project and major initiatives matrix, the, and this, and this particular document are, are critical going forward. They are going to guide the work of this and future councils for, for a very long time to come, because this is a comprehensive piece of work. And, and I do not think that the governance role is clearly defined in it, it just isn't, and the balance is not there. And, and that's just, like I said, I've sat with it for three days, and that's not enough really to have, have a, a fulsome understanding or, or even, um, a cognizant, um, direction, that, you know, I don't have that right now. And, you know, I will certainly be continuing to look at it and think about it and, and, um, be able to articulate it better, but this was just a lot, and so, yeah, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Counselor Langmaid?
Actually, if it's okay, I think, uh, Ms. Rusk has something to add.
I was just gonna suggest that if, if perhaps council isn't feeling ready to move forward with, with us taking this forward to a regular council meeting, um, there's kind of a couple things that we could do, we can either schedule a fair subsequent committee of the whole in, in September to give you some more time to maybe flush out what some of, some of those thoughts are, right, some more time to kind of sit with it and think about what exactly you'd like, like to see. The, the alternative thing that I've seen before also is, is if you want to provide us with, with, you know, your, your feedback via email, and obviously we would bring that to a subsequent meeting as well and say, "Okay, we've received this feedback, this is how we've, we've incorporated into a, into a subsequent draft and, and bring it back," we could do that, we could do that as well. But, but from what I'm kind of seeing right now, it seems like, like we're not ready to move that forward to regular council, and that's absolutely fine. We, it's really important to administration and obviously to council to this, you have to feel comfortable with this, and, and I'm not getting that, that vibe right now. And so we want to make sure that, that whatever those gaps are, that, that we're clear on, on what your, what your needs are, and we'll help, uh, help close them.
Thank you, Kara. Um, Counselor Peterson, I'm wondering if this, on page 11 of our package?
Yeah.
It's 20.1A, and I'm wondering if this is an example of something that makes you a little cautious?
Yeah, it is.
It says the CAO, "In conjunction with the Director of Strategic Administrative and Financial Services, blah, 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 may authorize amendments up to $200,000." In that little section A, there's nothing as far as informing the council, is, is that something that you mean there?
So I've, I've marked lots of them, you know, going, sorry, Your Worship, I've, I've marked lots of them going through the, uh, through the document, and, and you know, there's, there's nothing, I don't object to that in the document. What is missing here, so when I, I looked at, at some other, at some other, um, and I, and I didn't have a lot of time, so I only, I only honestly looked at two, uh, other guiding, uh, budget and taxation guiding principles from other councils, and both of them were from larger jurisdictions, much larger jurisdictions than, than we are, but they, they had a parallel document that, that was, um, related to governance. So, so there were, there were governance principles built into the budgeting and taxation process. If you were to look at this, you would see a little bit, you know, you would see the, the, the comments that Leanne gave, um, prior to, you know, the, the lead-in to, to this presentation, talked a, a brief bit to the, um, established principles for budget preparation, which clearly are under the jurisdiction of operations. But the decision-making, as she pointed out at the end of that, is clearly within the scope of council. So in the scope and the application, it is understood, but when you get to the actual principles, um, not so much, then it's very, very much heavily weighted on the, the, the authority of the CAO, um, and not so much on the expectations or guiding principles that would be needful for a governance body.
Okay, thank you, I think I understand.
So even, so even, when I went through this, I, you know, one of the thoughts I had, but like I said, I haven't had time to really, really foolsomely think. weighted on the authority of the CAO, and not so much on the expectations or guiding principles that would be needful for a governance body.
Okay, thank you, I think I understand.
So even, when I went through this, you know, one of the thoughts I had, but like I said, I haven't had time to really, really foolsomely think about it, I thought, what would it look like if you went through each set, each section, and you talked about what a guiding principle, a guiding governance principle would look like at the front end of each one of those?
Oh, so to show in each section how you would tie back councillor's role, council's role?
Yeah.
Okay, I get where you're at now.
And when I was looking at those, you know, other ones, which I said had limited implications for us, I was looking at legal and regulatory compliance, accountability and oversight, decision-making authority, the delegation of authority, strategic leadership, financial management, I'm not so sure, even, you know, as I said, I suppose it's an issue, because it has to be, and communication and stakeholder engagement. Those were the ones that I was looking at in terms of our role, relevant to this.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Langmaiden?
Thank you. I want to thank councillor Peterson for very eloquently putting words to what my feelings were when I read this, but I didn't know how to word it, and I was also, I held back a little bit, thinking, okay, this is your first term, Langmaiden, don't get, maybe there's things you don't know. My gut feeling, and I think it was actually summed up very well with the slip of councillor Scobal, is that the more we delegate, it feels like we're having an eighth member. There's an eighth member of council that's making some decisions for us. And at the end of the day, the seven people at this table, we wear those decisions publicly. Those decisions are reflected on us at election time, they're reflected in the communications we receive from residents. And our, it's so important that we know, and that if someone comes up to us with a concern, that we, that I can feel confident in that I know what's going on. And there's just a few situations in here where it's very easy for me to not know that something has happened, and to be a bit blindsided by it, you know, a $200,000 change in budget that gets signed off, even though it's still within what we've approved. Right now, there's nothing saying I'd find out about that. At some, I assume it would come in a report somewhere at some time, maybe, but there's nothing, it felt, when I read it, the combination of these documents, like I'm signing away some of my job, and that I'm kind of maybe losing a bit of accountability and autonomy in decision-making, in that the decisions are made, and I, am I becoming a rubber stamp? So I guess my question is, do councillors have a role in giving input on kind of direction, or are things decided and brought to us? Because this makes me feel like things are decided and brought to us.
I'm sorry, but nothing is brought to you decided. Everything is made, a decision is made by a council resolution, like, I'm sorry, but that's not a nice statement to make towards your administration.
I'm sorry, I certainly don't mean, I certainly don't mean to offend, or I don't think there's any, what's the word I'm looking for? Intentional, nothing intentionally happening, I'm just trying to share what my feelings were when I read through this.
Councillor Langmaiden, if I could offer some, sorry.
I would really suggest that the councillors put this in writing exactly what they want to see, because, you know, we're not, I'm honestly not understanding what the comments are tonight. This is generally the existing policy that's been in place in the town of Strathmore, complemented by research with other communities. So we felt we were bringing something forward that was consistent historically, but yet an improvement and a modernization. If that's not what council wants, that's fine, but, you know, I just feel like we should get those comments, take a couple months, bring it back in the fall.
I absolutely agree, and I think if I can offer some support to councillor Langmaiden and councillor Peterson, this discussion, and it's been said before, this discussion seen through the lens of our current administration is safe, and our views of this situation is safe with our current administration and senior leadership team. However, is there a chance that this written document could come back on us and make us a little less part of the process, should a future administration do things differently? And I hearken back to my previous term, and the build of this project and things that were done, where we didn't always know everything that we felt we should know, and we did wind up wearing this in public, and we didn't always have the answers when we were asked by people in the public. So I just want to reassure the people in this room that this has nothing to do with you, this is just to ensure that council's place in the process is a part of any documents, and that there could be some references to council in some of these sections. And Kara, I love your idea too, and CAO Scobal of, you know, taking this, coming back at a later date, we offer some suggestions, we offer some input in some of the sections where we think that council could be mentioned, or could be brought in a bit. And I think that could be very productive in producing a really, really strong, sound document, sound policy, not just for this current administration, which we know has really, really upped the game and improved things, but should things change in personnel in the future, this kind of document will offer some secure, happy, fuzzy feelings for council, in an informal way of presenting, Kara, and then councillor Langmaiden.
The other thing I would ask is just like, if there are certain policies or documents that you've seen that you like, right, that, you know, and obviously I don't want to, you know, create a burden of council going to do their own research, but if there are certain things that you have found that you like, please share that with us as well, too, and then we can use that to build, you know, what you might like going forward.
Thank you. Councillor Langmaiden?
Thank you, I just want, I just really want to reaffirm that this, my comments tonight are not personal against anyone in senior leadership, or in the administration, certainly not, it was just, not personal, just thoughts. And I absolutely would love an opportunity to provide some written feedback. Unfortunately, in the days I had to review this, most of it was spent reading and taking notes, and I didn't have much of an opportunity for consolidating those. In the, I think, four days we had to read this.
Thank you. Councillor Peterson?
I just want to conclude, Your Worship, by saying the deficits here are not in terms of the, as I said consistently, in terms of the organizational processes or practices. The deficits that I see here are in the accountability of governance. And so, I think, I don't think it's rocket science to be able to incorporate statements into this document that better reflect the role of council in all of these 22 sections, or 21 sections. I think there is a way to establish something that is, that shows the balance, that of the, of a good, fully functioning community always has a balance between governance and operations. And while it's clear that operations has done their work here, I'm not sure that governance has, is represented in the way that we need to be, so that we can be accountable to the Municipal Government Act that governs us. And there has been, you know, as Kevin Scobal said, it is, I see that it is based on previous actions, policies and bylaws of council. But as you noted, Your Worship, those have always, not always been reflected well in terms of the governance portion.
Thank you. So if I can circle back and conclude, Kara, Leanna, and CAO Scobal, would you like suggestions coming via email, as far as, and specifically lay out some things they'd like to see in certain sections?
Yes, I mean, the conversation tonight, as has been articulated many times, this is a governance matter. I wouldn't want us to be accused of doing governance work for council, so this is really actually where you need to roll up your sleeves and tell us what you want as the governance body of this community.
Thank you, CAO Scobal, and I think I've given you the one that I noticed, as far as the wording in 21.1A, just make, I was just suggesting, I can send it in an email as well, if you prefer.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mine was fairly simple, anyway, but I'll look at the others. Councillor Langmaiden, and then we can move on, I guess?
Yeah, sorry, I just have a real quick request. I understand, I heard you say that much of this is based on existing practice. I'm wondering if it's possible I could get a copy of the Black Line document, so that I can better review what has been inherited from previous documents and what is new, that way I'm not providing comments on something that is already established.
We can do that. The challenge will be, is because we've used multiple documents, so we can provide what the previous documents were, and what the new document is, because before we had a budget policy, and then we had a long-term financial plan policy, or a long-term financial plan, and we've kind of combined the two.
Sure, if you can provide me both, I'll do the background to compare them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So council, you have some homework, should you be so inclined, are there things that stick out to you? You can start sending in emails, and CC all of council, obviously, so we're all aware of everything, and then we can revisit this at a later date, using some of those suggestions, and see how we can put together a really fulsome policy that will be good for all involved. Thank you, Leanna.
Thank you.
We move now to 5.4, 2024 Budget Introduction. And Leanna, you lucky person, you get to stay for this one. Jonathan?
Thank you, Your Worship. Could we request just a brief recess?
Sure. We have, can we get a motion for a recess? Councillor Peterson?
Your Worship, I would move that council recess at 7:42, until, I guess, what's, 15 minutes, Jonathan? 10 minutes?
10 will be fine, thank you.
For 10 minutes.
Motion is carried, we will resume in 10 minutes. Thank you.